Yeah.
I hope she doesn't need it for you.
Oh, she can make calls off her iPad. My goodness.
You have your iPad, tell her you've got it.
Well, I don't think that'll work.
Do you sleep outside on nights like this?
Um, I find on it, don't I?
That's good. Is that all there? Oh. That's interesting. You know, there's a house over on, I know the, um, the family. I went to school with one kid.
Call him.
It's over in Stephanie's Ford. Anyway, um, it was the same situation where they have a double, they have a double garage, driveway, but on the other side, I said double garage.
I don't think it hangs on their eyes.
And all four of them had two car garage. He had, if he was a passenger, seventy-eight, um, Trans Am. And it was a nice door. Two steam condition cars. And he had, but everyone's, that's all they kept.
Years and years ago. Anyway, and I think we had changed at one point. Anyway, that's something that's jumped out at me. If you ever pull into a parking stall and you can't get the heck out of your car, it's aggravating. All these monster cars we have everywhere, nine foot doesn't cut it.
That's why I park clear down there.
So all I can think of is that we're trying to cater to economic development and cram as much parking as we can. So I just thought I'd leave that way now.
Okay.
I wish I could think of that engineer's name. McLeister might know who.
Benicas?
Huh?
Benicas?
No, before Benicas. Oh, God, you guys finally had to push him out.
Oh, you know what, I was talking about him the other day, Chuck, I cannot remember his name.
Roche?
Roche?
Roche.
No, not, not that far back.
Not shit, bro, no?
The old guy. Anyway, he.
I, I know exactly who.
He actually turned down, uh, a zoning decision for the Acme parking lot all the way there. Sorry, I'm losing my memories as well.
I'm no better here.
That's three of us.
Wish I could think of it.
It's gonna drive me nuts tonight, Chuck, I can't.
He was pretty harsh at council meetings, not very open to being pretty friendly with anybody that spoke.
Fleckner.
Any?
Fleckner, yes.
Was it, oh, okay.
It's more planning commission.
Yeah, 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 you end up being on the planning commission afterwards.
And he wanted to hang on and hang on, and you guys finally had to say no. But I can't imagine you okay in a nine-foot parking stall. And the length, I think the length, eighteen feet may be too short as well. Anyway, that's my two cents worth, which I know we don't want. But Fleckner believed it, and I remember that, I was quietly cheering.
Hello.
Hi there, Eric.
Good evening, good evening.
How are you?
Okay, gentlemen, yourselves?
Good.
Good, okay.
My eye today, I woke up, I called my optometrist, 'cause I woke up like right now, I have about five percent vision in this eye, like I just see light and dark, and the blood moves.
Yeah.
Right now, it's like right in the center of my eye.
It tends to float?
Yeah, it's like a snow globe almost, as it expels itself from my eye. So, yeah, it's really, it's even worse than last week, but when it's like this, it doesn't cause double vision, which is actually good. That's so disturbing.
Just so you know. It's a corporate preserver call.
Thanks for making that line clear.
Came in last Tuesday, it was a good day, till I opened the other package, and my taxes was in that one. But the license plate showed up Tuesday, only been six months.
That's how long it was?
Took six months to get taxed for that truck.
Wow.
What's that?
Do not buy car, I'm gonna have to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't go through that hassle.
I will learn from years, Eric.
Oh.
It's crazy what you went through.
I have to ask my buddy, I just drove him over, and he bought a, he bought a Jeep over in Pennsylvania, and, um.
A Jeep in Pennsylvania?
He got a good deal, he went to that Blue Knob Auto, which it seems like they have off-lease vehicles, and he got a pretty good deal on it. Yeah.
Did it come with an engine?
Yes, surprisingly, it did, it took it four times, surprisingly.
Jeeps are huge in Pennsylvania, you got Phantom?
Yes, the Phantom Fest, yeah. He had a few more miles than what I would have gotten for myself, but he did, I mean, he got a decent price on it, so.
Used cars, I guess.
Yeah, they're crazy, right? Interest rates, that's the other thing.
What's the interest rate on these cars?
I think, well, I think he got a halfway decent interest rate, but interest rates can be as high as six, seven, eight percent.
Really?
Pretty close.
Hello, sir.
Hello. What happened to like three ninety-nine or?
Gone. The way of the dodo, I think.
That all helps me. Isn't this cute?
I thought I was supposed to stop them from that thing.
Well, I have these little sprays.
I didn't see, I didn't see the owner. I didn't see the owner, like, you know.
Only thing in that house is those two chairs in that whole shop, that you can see in the house.
Eleven oh four, what?
I don't know, felt like I turned it on.
Turned it in.
You're rubbing off on me, I'm waiting for that.
That's for when we do our presentation, somebody's gonna have to.
Sorry, I missed that.
Well, you had a good day there. Relax, you had a good day.
Yeah, I did some things for fun.
How are you?
Been singing last two weeks, just.
I was going with the songs, I don't mind.
Losing my phone, everything stopped, so. I think that kind of thing, I needed that.
How are you?
Hello, Miss Christie.
Doing good.
Hey, we're ready.
Okay. I did.
Mostly just a tree.
Yeah, it's, it's new, I got my other bike, the battery was not lasting.
I was out there.
And I started doing some research, and so I do this, you know, I do the swimming stuff, and the swimming stuff, and so this is the Ultra.
Through a couple of.
It's gonna be a little towards that type of stuff, so. Oh, this thing's massive.
Yeah.
Our street crew got.
But I love it, it's, the battery, it's like amazing. Oh, and I'll even sleep in it, because it doesn't sleep, I think that's a solid twenty-four hours.
You get to enjoy the weather.
I mean, I, I have, I just, my shower is one, it's like thirty, it's still sixty-five percent. More than fifty percent by now, you know, charged. It's almost charged. So it can go all the way, maybe eighty-five percent charged.
That's pretty good.
I love it, and supposedly it'll go for the six.
Small twist.
And then also, not that it should die. So it's actually true, yeah, it's large, yeah. Why swim? It'll track your, that's what's true, you're swimming, but it's backstroke. Cause then. Water, that's what a little drop is, it's waterproof, I mean, you can swim, but that does, it's, it's a good guy. That's it, it's, certain vibrations will eject water out of the speaker.
At least the good thing is, he dodged.
And then, but then you can do like, like, once a month, like I do workouts, so, you know, I can swim pool, swim, and I have the length for the pool. And then you start, like, like I said, you can tell, it can tell if you're free style, if you're high stroke, if you're back stroke. And then either you can go between the strokes, and you'll tell that you did two hundred runs of this, you did a hundred runs. It's great.
Pretty sweet.
Fuel with dog with it, we're gonna.
Cause then like, if you go, you'll take this and that, because. Like here. So I ran, well, I ran inside, I was too cold yesterday. So I did twenty-one hundred runs. So then it tells you everything, like, and then also tell you your average heart rate, uh, the number of laps you did. He wasn't doing paces and splits, there's my heart rate over the time.
I'll give him a two point tomorrow, so, that's a ten.
I'm a big believer in Apple Watches, so.
Can't wait to use all this information to Columbia.
Oh, yeah? Yeah. Well, don't you ever have a watch? I think you had it.
No, I've never had one. I don't wear a watch, so that's like, I wanted it for the functions and like sleep tracking and all of that.
We watch Parks and Recreation, I was a huge.
You'll sell.
It doesn't fit your phone.
Cases too.
No. Katie has worked here. And I go, this is just competitive, so you're on it, so like my phone, it'll be in the call, or something, other, also the calls are.
I like that.
Just move your back. Nothing, huh? Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. What day's surgery?
Uh, April nineteenth. Okay. Yeah, she, uh, she's not looking back, I mean, Katie, we haven't really talked about it much.
I have a clean slate, I'm only past week.
I do, I'm sure. They'll probably start to bother, I've got a support for some girls' hats and.
Hello.
Yeah, exactly.
I was losing.
As far as I know.
I mean, she was only playing a song, but I mean, I came here, parked my car, and I, she was, she had softball practice over there, so. She's got no restrictions, so.
Yeah, I had to talk to you about it.
Hello, young man, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, what school are you from?
Central.
Central, very good, here for a government class?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you need a signature to come somewhere? Well, you have your choice of council or the mayor, so if you want to go forward, we can take care of that now, if you want to. I'll see, wow, what's your, Michael H. Beach, alright.
What was he doing?
Yeah, good for you. You any, uh? What do I do, I'm just curious, are you in between sports right now?
Um, yeah. As if you need a third thing with the day.
This is a, so they'll be discussing things on the agenda tonight, okay? Just to give you an idea about.
Creepers.
I'm sorry, you went to the middle house, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, anyway, so things are.
What year are you now?
Uh, senior.
Senior? Nice meeting you, good luck with everything.
I'm sorry.
Do you have any ideas?
Yes, um. So, the commitment ceremony wedding is.
So I just caught up on stuff from yesterday.
I can't have what's getting to your voice. Okay. Good for you. Well, nice meeting you.
Before they had to talk about the history of the.
Get her, get her, get her doctor-in-law.
I've worked here for almost twelve years, you know, I mean, they're refreshing, but, yeah, but I knew that I could trace our history back to some time ago, so.
Kind of excited.
So, yeah, so there's just bad stuff.
She's in Montes, one of those, she's just in Montes today. Pre-mixigash, she's in bars, she's in the press, she's in the press, she's been with all our friends before she left, she was in London, and now she's in Montes, she's off the toe of Hitler. That's where he lives. I saw her on an idea, it's gonna be her, she's gonna be her patient, she has a person, so she's not gonna have a maid of honor, I, I don't know. You know what? Yeah, so she goes to back, and then his patients, and then his doctor, and then she can practice.
So it's a different.
She has her L L W, which is her master's, so she hasn't undergraduated, she's a master's, and then she has a bar, she's gotta get her doctorate. That's why she probably cost her way to go, that's why. She's hoping that her spouse has. So if the guys.
Yeah. Requirements. Very interesting, and I was trying to, I was trying to engage him in a different way, and, uh, it was funny, cause I was just doing this, and I said, so you didn't think that you were doing that? I would say, you know, cause it was insane, it was, you know, I reserve, you know, I, I don't wanna give them all that, I'm just giving them everything that's available, you know what I'm saying? Somebody else got like.
Or broken heart.
And I literally do like this, and try to get them to laugh.
Yeah.
And, uh.
You know, you're certainly want a tree, and that's what we tried to do, and make it all.
It's part of it, it's not, it's a replacement, he told, it's sites, and all my patients work together. Do you think I told this guy that he's gonna kill all these?
This one, so he doesn't just pay attention to you, that's what I thought, but I'm like, okay, getting on a phone.
He was, he was not. There's time to develop some people. Cause she, he was, you're good for her, but like, he's, he's so, who's gonna get you real wide?
Yeah, oh, totally, yeah. Obviously, that's right.
Yeah. And now.
Yeah, I'll need glasses, it can't see, it's gonna focus a little better.
You just didn't see her.
Uh, it would be some crossover to the stack. How are you?
You ready to start? Alright, ready? Okay, and now call to order, the committee of the whole meeting of April third, twenty twenty-three, uh, Ben, would you please call the rule?
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Wyrick?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Shroyer?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Six present, member Waren is absent.
Motion to excuse member Waren, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, uh, community and economic development, general.
Okay. We have two items on our agenda this evening, uh, the first is, uh, an ordinance that will repeal and replace chapter eleven fifty-three, off-street parking of the codified ordinances. Uh, just by way of background, this was last touched twenty years ago, in two thousand and three. And we have a request from the administration, uh, to bring our off-street parking more in line with our main street zoning, to give us a little more flexibility, I'll go into that in just a minute. But I think it's important, uh, first of all, is, is that, well, we're gonna have some discussion on this, our end goal tonight is to send this to the planning commission. So we should, we have plenty of time to chew on this a little bit. But it's important to note that the overall goals, uh, established in two thousand and three, for off-street parking remain the same, and they're, they appear in, in the language. As that indicated, what we're really seeking to do, or the administration is seeking to do, uh, is to better align our parking policies or legislation with what we hope to achieve through our main street zoning. Particularly, as I said, the off-street parking. If you'll note, and I draw your attention to eleven fifty-three oh four, one of the hallmarks of this legislation is that we are going to move some of this from requirements to recommendations. City will still have the approval authority, but these are the recommendations, these are the starting points for the discussion. So again, I think it gives us the ability to tailor, tailor what we're doing to specific sites. You say, why do we want to do this? Well, let me give you two practical examples. Uh, the first is, you may recall, some weeks ago, we had the representatives from Athens here, the Albrecht brothers. That particular property has been long in existence, there's a huge amount of asphalt up there, that serves no public good. It certainly does not support the city's economic development efforts. Could we, in discussions with the Albrechts, if we had something like this, revisit that site? And through collaboration, develop a scheme that might work for the property owner, and work for the community, and I think that's the key, this is a partnership. What works for the, the business, and works for the community as well, be balanced. Second example might be the deep old facility at the intersection of Charlotte and Main, we have a number of outlets. Could it be possible to redevelop some of those parcels as well? Or would we prefer to leave them in asphalt? Fair question. So, when the owners of that complex would come to us and say, listen, we think we've got enough adequate parking here, we'd like to explore this, this will give us an opportunity, again, to work with the administration, have the administration work with the property owner, to come up with a plan, and approve that plan for that site. There are other uses as well, uh, we've got a big project or two that might be coming along, that might, uh, benefit from recommendations as opposed to requirements, and again, one of the themes that we have attempted to, uh, implement, is this notion of collaboration on projects. Whether, we're simply not simply saying, this is the reg, and here, like it or leave, we don't want to do that. We want to sit down and come up again with a solution that works for the community and works for the business, and maximizes benefits from both. So this is, I think this is the approach. Patrick, what am I leaving out here?
Well, uh, I would add that, uh, in, uh, our efforts here, we're finding that the, uh, the standards that we did have, largely dated, not tied to what has happened in the economy, and with societal trends in the last twenty years. To me, when you go up and down Main Street, the, the way it is constructed today, it's largely a giant parking lot, all up and down, with small little buildings on it. And that's, you know, it's throughout the city, but you notice it on Main, but, uh, when we take, say, for instance, uh, a building on Schneider that's been attempted to be converted into, from an office to, uh, an apartment building, under the current code, you know, they would be required to, uh, have one covered and one uncovered spot per, per unit, plus guest parking, plus handicap parking, et cetera, and so on. And, uh, in this particular instance, if that was adhered to, that would require them to buy extra land around them to make more parking. In talking with, uh, a number of places that today, the most of the apartments don't need a covered space, enclosed space, I should say, and, uh, an open space. What we find is that the enclosed spaces aren't being used by the tenants, they're being sublet, for people to store things in. And, you know, I'm not sure if that's really what we're trying to, you know, accomplish at the end of the day, and it makes, uh, a, a, a much more permanent, uh, surface that, you know, in today's, um, environment, we would like to reduce the footprint, you know, of the asphalt, as, as much as we can. The other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, as, as we move forward, you know, from twenty years ago, and when that was written twenty years ago, it was taking into context the previous twenty years. Uh, but I think we can all agree that, you know, vehicles are smaller today than they were twenty years ago, forty years ago. So, you know, the size of this parking space makes a difference. Uh, you know, when it comes to restaurants, and, and, you know, quick service restaurants, um, require, all the, all the parking for those places doesn't take into account that we're mostly a drive-through. Most of the sales come through drive-through, not through in-store anymore, that, um, we also have, you know, Uber, Lyft, Grubhub, that takes into account deliveries, we're not parking, uh, there. And as we move further, and we look forward to the next twenty years, we talk about artificial intelligence. intelligence, robo-taxis, you know, driverless vehicles, it's happening in other communities. I've been into San Francisco, uh, where GM's, uh, Cruise Division, uh, and, uh, is, you can, you see the vehicles driving around without people in them all the time. And so, you know, as this stuff, you know, eventually rolls out, the idea that we're still requiring the same number of parking spaces, uh, just makes for big parking lots, and there's other things that we could do. Um, so we, we think that it makes more sense to kind of get in line with where we are and where we think that it's going and being able to encourage redevelopment. Uh, it doesn't make sense to encourage, you know, redevelopment if then you have to buy another parcel just to put, uh, additional parking on. We think this would help.
We should also note too is, is that if your parking requirements are too stringent, it may really constrain your ability to reuse some of our smaller properties on Main Street. And I think we just have to acknowledge that. So we do want to make sure that, again, we want to consider whether we want, we want to, we use the word liberalized, but we want to, we want to be flexible so we can get somebody to get, again, capital investment. I look at, for example, Sheil Coffee in the South End and, and I'm trying to think of the coffee shop up on Fifth.
Tremont.
But Tremont, but I mean, you know, look, those individuals took two buildings that were basically unused and eyesores and redeveloped them.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Sheil, who's the one I drive by regularly, is, is, is a raging success. Good for the community.
Yep.
So, um, I think, I, I, I would just add one, one more thing about this, and I think this is what I find sort of ironic and a bit amusing, amusing, is that during the late sixties, the city fathers decided consciously to create a community like the one Patrick described. Here we are now sixty years later, trying to go back to the old North Canton, trying to get back there.
Mm-hmm.
To have that pedestrian appeal, et cetera. So, I don't know. So let's, uh, let's open it up for questions, Mr. Matheny?
Yeah, I have a couple. At one point, it talks about setback off the street. Is this going to affect current issues? So a week ago, I had breakfast at, um, Crow's Nest, and I know their parking backs up right to the street and the longer path that's at the back of that. So I'm assuming that we're not gonna retro this.
This would be grandfathered in.
Okay. That was, what was one concern. They did want to affect businesses that we currently have.
Correct.
And then to Mr. DiOrio's point about vehicles being smaller now, I drive an F-150. Pickup trucks, F-150s are one of the largest selling vehicles on the road right now. My vehicle's seven point two feet wide, that leaves me eleven inches on each side on the nine-foot space. I can't open my door. At eighteen feet long, my truck's twenty-one feet long. I can barely fit in my own garage. I got about three inches on the front and three inches on the back. And that would put vehicles into those lanes between the parking spaces, and I think that might need to be looked at.
Let me, and let me respond to your question in this fashion. If we look at the process, there's a site approval process that will be determined by the administration. There is absolutely no reason, at least in, again, we're talking about recommendations. In my view, there's absolutely no reason the administration couldn't create two widths on one site. Let's assume you've got ten spots, seven of them are gonna be the smaller, three of them you reserve for trucks.
Nobody necessarily parks in reserved spots.
I, I get that.
They're gonna take whatever spot, open. But the point being that nine feet, eleven inches to open car doors.
It's pretty tight.
It's gonna be pretty tight. And those smaller cars that are coupes instead of sedans have longer doors. I just, you know, I'm concerned.
Yeah, but, but to push back on that, I mean, our current standard, the current standard that ten by twenty wouldn't help you with your tank. You're already.
On a foot out instead of three. So if you've got two trucks backed up and you've only got, and you're narrowing the space in between the parking spaces, I just think that backing in and out with a twenty-foot or twenty-one-foot truck, it, it could be a concern, and I think it's something that we should look at.
Let's kick it around. I mean, you know, and again, the, the idea is, is that we, we want to.
I like where it's going.
So do I.
Making it more business friendly.
Can we, can we be flexible about it? I have, I have great confidence the administration can figure something out at the end of the day. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. So we'll go for that. But to your point is, Old England never parks next to cars with big doors. I get it. Christina?
I am excited that we're talking about this. I think, um, just if anything we can do to be more reasonable to businesses, and we're, we have an urban city center, you know? I mean, maybe we were trying not to at some point, but now we're trying to, like you said. And I remember I brought in, um, some representatives from Main Street, Ohio, a few years ago, and they walked our downtown and they were like, yeah, it's all parking lots, like, what, what are you gonna do here? And I'm like, yeah, I don't know. Um, and then I also remember the whole debacle whenever PAVs was trying to open and honestly, the bad taste that was left in their mouth, um, because of how difficult we were to work with on that. And fortunately, that worked out, and, you know, I live right there, and is the parking lot crowded? Sure, but good. Like, you know, there aren't crashes happening, there's nothing, no one's getting run over. Um, so I just think flexibility is really important, so I'm glad this is coming up.
Okay. What would you suggest on, um, East Maple, across from the Hoover Company, there's parking spots forever, you know? And I know they don't use a third of the parking or two-thirds of that parking, and that looks like that could easily be developed into something back there. Have we ever looked, you know, you, you take the, uh, what is it, the, uh, south side of the Hoover Company, maybe the first three or four are pretty well full, then the rest of that lot is empty.
Well, again, that's, uh, it's not our.
It's not our property.
Right.
It's up to them, and I wouldn't hold your breath.
Yeah.
Waiting for them to do something.
We held our breath for a long time.
Sensical, logical.
Yeah.
But, you know, one of the things that, that I think a future council and administration may want to wrestle with is there a role for municipal parking lot, municipal deck. You know, I, I look at redevelopment in other communities, uh, these are very, very common. Like, I'm not sure of the ownership, but I want to be perfectly honest with you. Parking, parking decks are not, not inexpensive to maintain. They may go up easily, but, uh, you know, they have, they have fairly significant maintenance costs. Um, you know, but that may be something down the road as, as we look, as we look at, so.
And that's part of the mess we're in too, I think.
Right.
You know, we have in there adding some sort of shared parking. I mean, I know, you know, it would be helpful to the library right now if there were some kind of shared parking.
Absolutely, and paths, with paths, the Alderation Place, and there's a, what is it, a coffee place now there. They're all fighting for whatever space is available apart.
Mr. Matheny?
Um, I actually want to echo what my two colleagues to the left of me said. So you brought up PAVs, and I can vividly remember that approval process as I was a member of the planning commission at the time. And while I think they needed more parking spaces than what they originally wanted, they certainly don't need, at least in my mind, everything that they have there now. So I think becoming a little more business friendly, I think, makes sense. You referenced earlier, um, possibly with the Albrechts up there at Acme. I mean, my gosh, if we could get to the point where maybe they could have some outlots out front, almost, um, kind of where the old Wendy's, where it was a Charlie's Cheesesteak is, maybe even along the front, a couple more outlots would be great, but, um, but I also do echo what, what Dave has said. Um, you know, I'd be curious what the planning commission says. I am a little bit nervous about nine-foot-wide, um, parking spots, uh, and eighteen feet, uh, in length. So just a little nervous. I mean, I don't drive a huge car like, like you do, a tank. Um, but it seems like, it seems like, you know, twenty years ago, there were big cars, people were driving, you know, Arnold, Arnold Schwarzenegger and his Hummers, you know? Um, then the cars got smaller, then they get bigger, it seems like they go back and forth. So they might be smaller now, or are they gonna remain smaller? But I don't know.
Well, I would just, I, just, just a real quick comment, uh, I would be very careful using the disparaging word "tank" because Mr. Matheny is environmentally sensitive and committed to a green energy future. But, uh, uh, finalize my comments, I think this is fantastic and it's moving in the right direction. Okay. Yeah. And again, I, you know, I, I, I think the, to come back to this, no matter what the planning commission says, I think what we're looking for, remember, we've got five zones out there on Main Street. All right? What we're trying to achieve is flexibility to meet development requirements, whatever they may be. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to trust the administration to work with an applicant to come up with a good plan.
To caveat that, these regulations are effectively already in place for the main street.
They're already there.
So this is, this proposal would essentially expand to general business A, general business B, O B, what's in Main Street. So Main Street's already nine by eighteen with no minimums.
You know, you go past, uh, where Roses is and Kuala Cruisers, I don't know how many vans they park there for Kuala Cruisers across that, it's probably twenty.
Yeah. I think the point is that we want to make, is we don't really want to tinker with this effort right now. It is a plus.
We don't want that, that.
We, we, we don't want tinker. Leave what we have, let's improve what we have. Go from there. Mr. Schreier?
Um, I like the idea of the variable parking spaces. I mean, the, the option of that, like, some bigger, some smaller, for everyone that drives a tank, like Dave, there's one that drives a motorcycle or, or a, a sports, like, what is it, Honda Fit or whatever those tiny ones are.
A Prius.
Uh, yeah, a Prius, sure. So I mean, but I don't know how you would enforce it because it is first come, first served, people don't pay attention to where they park. But, uh, no, I like the direction of where we're going with this, so.
All right. So if there aren't any additional comments from the administration or from council, uh, what we need to have is, and I'm gonna make this motion, that we send this to the planning commission for its review and recommendations. Second, make that motion. It's been seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, I'd like to make a second motion that we council postpone further consideration of item three A until the planning commission returns this matter to us.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay.
All righty. The second item we have on our agenda this evening is the establishment of a facade program for Main Street businesses. Uh, we have talked about it from time to time, uh, but the administration has brought us, uh, a chapter, seven oh nine, which will create this. The goal is to have a more cohesive Main Street look or appearance with the establishment of a set of design standards and a method for partially funding some of those improvements subject to approval. Um, if you will note, um, section seven oh nine oh three discusses the application approval process, and, uh, what the administration is proposing is that, once these are approved, that the fees for that work be waived. And those waivers are referenced in section D of seven oh nine oh three. So if you'll turn it, it's on page twenty-eight of your packet, and you'll note that for projects with less than two thousand dollars, you can have a hundred percent. Projects more than two thousand but less than five, seventy-five percent, up to seventy-five percent, and then projects equal to five thousand or more, fifty percent of the fees would be waived, or could be waived. I should note that this is permissive, it is not automatic. So it's subject to negotiation with the administration regarding the waiver. Um, I would also note that if you get over into section seven oh nine oh five, detailed are the cohesive design standards, and we have some illustrations. Patrick, I am going to assume that Marty was involved in the creation of these?
Uh, everybody is involved in the creation of a lot of our legislation, so we do an internal, uh, roundtable. We've been working on this for, I think, at least a year. And Ben and his team and Marty and myself and, you know, just, uh, others, uh, sort of, you know, we shoot holes in it, go to other communities, see what they have, uh, talk with our, uh, economic development consultants to get ideas on the, the process, you know, how it works, what happens if somebody doesn't follow through, those kinds of things, so that we kind of standardize our approach and there being an application, information that has to be submitted in order to vet out who could be, uh, a good candidate for that.
I would call everyone's attention to those comprehensive design standards that the ordinance does reference facade materials. And this is red brick. We have a number of structures in town that are already, that already contain or comprised of red brick, constructed with red brick, and this will, this is the, the, what the dominant facade feature, red brick. I know that Patrick is very fond of white vinyl, but we are not going to do it. So we don't think that this, I, I would not think this would be a hardship. We're appealing to use something that's already there. I mean, if you drive up and down Main Street, you know, DeHoff's got red brick at his office. You know, we've got the four illustrations here, we've got churches with red brick, water stations brown, but.
Light gray and brown.
Yeah, it's light brown. But that's a, it's a mid-century design on that.
With City Hall.
City Hall. It's an abomination.
Concrete.
Concrete, yeah. I mean.
There's some red brick.
There's a little bit.
Little bit.
And of course, the large Hoover Office Building is red brick, right? Mm-hmm. Yeah. But again, it speaks to where the community wanted to go sixty years ago. So, okay, let's open this up for questions or comments. Uh, this is one we do not need to refer to the planning commission tonight, so we'll run this up for a first reading, but before we do, Mr. Matheny, questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, and maybe Mr. DiOrio can run me through the process. Ultimately, this is to give them an opportunity to not pay the permit fees. So they get a, an architect's drawing, get two quotes, pay an application fee, submit that, goes through the process of, of being reviewed, and then it gets to administration, it gets to be reviewed, and then it goes back, and they've got a certain timeline to meet that. Um, I do have a concern about opening for business in thirty days after this starts. I don't want to hamper businesses that are still working on the inside. I think, oh, Charlie's came down, so a lot of the outside work was done, but it took a long time to finish the inside. So I want to make sure that they don't lose their waiver of fees, you know, after that's done. And then I have one follow-up question in terms of the fees.
Well, um, uh, let's say that, you know, what we're really targeting here is, um, we're really targeting an operation that stay in, that's actually open and stay open, but they're trying to improve their facade tied into this cohesive look. So, uh, not, you know, the, the downside is that if they, I can rephrase it this way. What we get concerned about is somebody that would apply, uh, give their waivers, do all that, but then never fit. but then never finish the project. So, we have to put some sort of timeline in there, whether we keep it at this, and, or we come back and say, well, you know, thirty seems to be a little bit too brisk, but, uh, for those that are already open, it shouldn't, it shouldn't matter. But, I hear your point, it might just be something through trial and error that we can, we see how it goes. But letting him have his follow-up before you interrupt him.
Well, can I, can I add to that, that they could, if someone were doing something to the inside as well, they could include that in the project they submit, it's just, any work on the inside won't be eligible for that permit fee with it. So, if you included that inside in your project submission, then that would also be included, and your project's not complete until that part's done as well.
That helps.
Good point.
That helps, okay. It was just looking at somebody was changing customers into the building, gonna do an upgrade to the exterior, had to open up the business within thirty days of finishing that, where good weather might mean we're gonna work outside all we can, type of thing. That was my concern, but I do have a follow-up, but go ahead, Mr. Revo.
Let me direct your concern to Ben and Patrick. Could we add some language that gives the administration the opportunity to extend it due to conditions? You know, for example, supply, you know, what if you can't get the lighting because it's coming from China?
That's in there, where they can extend it to get the completion done, because they have to get it completed, I think, within a year. It was just the opening of the business within thirty days of completion that...
Well, that's what I'm talking about, is can we, should we have some language that addresses that? Patrick, Ben?
I think I'm comfortable with it as is. I think you have to start somewhere, and as you have said, in case you don't remember, because I know you did celebrate another year of aging. Yeah, but, you know, we have a pattern that we, we'll bring it back to you. We'll bring it back and say, look, the practical application of this is, we had to start somewhere, this is what we came with, but I think we need to tweak it. And that's what we've been doing here, and we would continue to do that. So, I don't wanna get lost in...
Get in weeds.
In the weeds on this, get it going. You know, you, we may, we may launch this, and no one, no one comes forward to even do anything with it, and then that's another set of things that we would have to reevaluate.
But I certainly like, when you sit down with a new business coming to town, to have this as something to lay on the table as a demonstration of our business hospitality. I like that. It's a stick in the eye. Okay.
So, the follow-up question has to, I'm a numbers guy, and, and I'm just looking at the numbers of permit fees, and I don't know what the average fee would be, and it ranges the two thousand, five thousand, and five thousand above. So, at seventy-five percent, I would like to come in right about forty-seven, fifty, get a thirty-five hundred dollar deal, but to get thirty-five hundred dollars on anything over five thousand at a full fifty percent, you gotta be at over seven thousand dollars in permit fees. And I just, I, I think it's a little clunky in determining the up-to and where they're gonna get their value. You know what I mean? So, if, if my permit fees was four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, at seventy-five percent, I'm gonna get thirty-five hundred dollars off my permit fees, that's a great deal. It's a lot, permit fees, but that's a great deal. But if my permit fees take me above that, it takes me above the five thousand mark, and I'm working on that fifty percent mark, I gotta get to seventy-one, twenty-five to get thirty-five hundred dollars back in permit fees at fifty percent, so. It was just a little clunky there.
Keeping in mind that the applicant has no control over the permit fees, and what's required as far as, you know, plan reviews, how many of them, what types of inspections, how many inspections, you know. We see a lot of, um, construction that requires multiple inspections, because the work isn't, you know, necessarily up to par. So, um, they really don't know what that's gonna be until really the project is ended. I mean, the site plan, you know, or the, uh, review and, and all that is known upfront, because you get that bill before you even start your work. But ongoing permit fees for all the inspections and whatnot, it's kind of out of their control, so I'm not sure if they'll get, if, if they're, if you're trying to get it so that, I think, I hear you're right, is that when you're over five thousand, because you're getting a lower percentage, it's a dollar amount that is less than the previous bracket, which was seventy-five percent of the other number, which gets you to thirty-seven and change. So, it's like, well, jeez, I almost have an incentive to keep it under five, rather than go over five, but you don't really get to determine what it is. Because we don't, it, each plan, you know, takes so much time to review. Some plan might be done in an hour, because it's more simple, or it was done professionally, submitted to us. Others are complicated, or they're done on the back of a napkin, and my career's held a lot more review.
Okay.
I don't know. Uh, again, I will make a note of it, though, or Ben will, and we will, we will revisit that.
I would not be opposed of, you know, the re-inspections not even qualifying. Incentive to get everything done correctly upfront at first, to make sure your contractor is, is doing their part, that, that the re-inspection fees don't even qualify for the rebate. This is just the onset of the program. And make it a little higher percentage, and then charge the full price for re-inspection. As a thought?
Uh, we would, that, that makes sense to me, I, I mean, we could insert a word initial in front of those, you know, estimated initial permit fees, as opposed to, as we've now just estimated permit fees, which would be all-inclusive, so. I, you know, I think we should support an amendment to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Taylor, I love it. So, from being on planning commission, years ago, the things that I can remember hearing were, North Canton is not business-friendly. Well, man, with what we just talked about before, and what we're talking about here, I think we're demonstrating that we are business-friendly, I think this is fantastic, so. Um, the other thing that I've heard as of late is, and I think it comes from a lack of understanding from some people, but they talk about how expensive our permit fees are. Well, here you go, we do the facade in your building on, uh, Main Street, and, uh, we're gonna give you a break on those permit fees, so, I love it, fantastic. Matt?
Good.
John? I'm good, but I don't think our permit fees are out there, under, I think, for what we charge, you know, what we currently are charging, but I agree with everything you say.
Just one final...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm not drawn to repeat.
I think our permit fees are a little bit on the lower side.
Yes, they are.
Compared to other municipalities around, we could easily up them a lot.
And I'll clarify my comments, I don't know, I'm just going by what people have said. Like I said in my comment, it comes from a lack of understanding from some of these people.
Yeah, we, we didn't wanna really raise them at the time, and we've kept them at the same thing for a long time.
And, and to your point, I would just like to add that, you know, that's something that, that we'll be looking to evaluate in the, in the fall. Right now that we have, we have a lot on our plate, and our, our team can't look at that yet, but come fall, we're gonna take a look at all the, a lot of the other communities, kind of pull some research together, kind of see where we are, and if any adjustments need to be made. We'll, we'll preserve our, uh, pay until then.
Just as a final comment, you know, we, when Patrick sits down with a business, we have a number of economic development tools in place. Two of them that are most prominent in that, in that toolkit are property tax abatements and the use of an income tax refund. So, a little quick back-of-the-napkin math here, and this goes to Dave's comment about kind of where the fees land. This is not insignificant. If you had a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar building, a year's one-hundred percent tax abatement on it is about five grand. Gives you a little reference point. If you have ten forty-thousand-dollar-year jobs, or five eighty-thousand-dollar-year jobs, you used a hundred percent income tax, we don't do that, but if you did, used a hundred, it's about six grand. So, again, this is a nice little incentive, it's good to have, it's a great tool for the administration to use in negotiation, to kind of get a project where we want it to go, maybe over the finish line. So, okay, we've gone around the table, um, we'd like to make one amendment, that's been discussed, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to place this on the agenda for our next council meeting.
Second?
Wait, what's, what's your amendment?
It was the use of the word initial.
Okay.
And Ben has captured that, nod your head, Ben.
I'll have language next time, yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, so it's been moved and seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to financing of property, I will hit the discussion, since Stephanie is not here. Uh, four A has to do with, uh, the selling of an ambulance that is no longer in service through, um, an auction. There, there's not much more to this, is there? I mean, it, it's pretty simple. Jamie, you're not allowed to buy it directly, but you can buy it from the auction, please. Am I missing anything else?
We'll have to advertise it for two to four weeks.
Okay.
At least twice, ten to twenty days, there's all kinds of rules, it's in Ohio Vice Code seven twenty-one, to dispose of property. So, this piece, we will probably have a city auction maybe later in the year with other equipment, but this specifically, we're ready to dispose of, we've replaced it last year.
Can we call ambulance Vanna?
I'm sorry?
Can we call ambulance Vanna?
I like it.
I didn't get that at first.
Seven twenty-one.
Any, yeah, not a tank. Uh, any, any other comments, questions on this? I'll make a motion to move this on to the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then, moving on, um, uh, appropriation for, for, um, current expenses. Uh, Gina, if you wanna talk about that?
Um, sure, so I'll run down through the list, because we haven't had an appropriations amendment. Um, we had one early in January to get the year started, but this really trues up the quarter so far. So, I'll just run down the line items, if, if that's okay. I, I do wanna mention, though, the, the total's like two-point-seven million, but we're also receiving around two-point-six, two-point-seven million in revenue. So, they're offsetting a lot of these expenses, we just need the authority to spend the new money that's coming in. Um, so, in the general fund, we have Marx radios to pay for, for police fire dispatch. Um, the fire actually did get partial donate, or a grant to help pay for theirs. Um, and we did receive some unemployment claims that we, the city will pay. We have some new software that we'll be applying, um, it's also through Open Gov for permits. We have the non-tax revenue fifteen-year bonds, and the very, um, I'm sorry, we'll sell those bonds on April eighteenth, we'll close, receive those proceeds. So, we need the authority to spend that money. And then the first interest payment to the investors will be due in December, so we're asking for an appropriation amendment to add that as well. Um, the donations, the fire department received a six-hundred-dollar donation, the recreation department received an eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation for the fishing rodeo from the F O E, the Eagles. Um, in the compensated absences fund, we budgeted, if you remember, anyone that is eligible to retire, or, or they, if we knew that they were leaving, we would have vacation or sick payout due. So, we've had a few of those occur already, and we just wanted to true up that appropriation, um, for what was actually, because we just estimate what their balances are gonna be and what's going to be due. So, for the people that we already know, we wanna take care of that. The opioid settlement, so if you recall, um, last month, I believe in February, I want to say, two months ago in February, um, we council passed an ordinance to participate in the manufacturers opioid, um, as well, and so we did receive two more payments so far on that. We'd like to be able to appropriate that money to the S R O program. In the COVID relief fund, the two nineteen, that's the ARPA funds, and so we are really just reallocating some of the project money from water and sewer department up to the street department. And some of those reallocations also are due to the fact that we got OPW C reimbursement on some of the projects, so we can't use federal funds and, and then receive state reimbursement funds. So, we're reallocating some of those unused monies toward other projects now for street, uh, the Charlotte Street, those improvements that are needed. And the capital improvement funds, you, that's where you'll see the three-point-three-million non-tax revenue. Bond proceeds, so we would like to allocate those and budget for them to be used. The water operating fund is again another unemployment claim that we have to pay from a year or so ago. And then the sewer operating fund, so when we set the budget on the sewer, we've since then have had, um, new contracts with Canton and the county, and the debt used to be, um, separated in our budget, but now they have rolled those into the new contracts. So, again, we just wanna true up that budget, and, and we did the same thing on the revenue side. They didn't increase their rates more than what we thought they would be to cover that, so both sides are getting reduced, revenue and expenses.
Thank you, Gina. Any questions, comments? Dave?
I'm good.
Christina? Jamie?
I'm good.
Daryl?
I'm good.
John?
Good.
All right, um, I will make a motion to move this on to the council agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, John?
All right, we've got two things to discuss. The first one's an ordinance repealing and replacing, uh, chapter three fifty-one. This is more for parking tickets. There's no, no place to really appeal the parking tickets, so I think it's, you get a parking ticket for five dollars, it's five dollars for the penalty, or something of that nature, I think. Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
When you're ready, I'll help fill in some of the blanks, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a, a pretty comprehensive, uh, re, and review, rewrite, and re-analy, reanalysis of, of parking, uh, generally. And it, it's not just parking on the street between two A M. and six A M. that we're talking about here. We're talking about mostly, the issues that we have are parking on unauthorized surfaces. People parking in their yards. On my way here tonight, came down, uh, Overland, had two vehicles parked, pulled up in their front yards. You know, no reason why they shouldn't be in the driveway, stuff like that. We also need to keep in mind that we're not just talking about automobiles. We're also talking about trailers that can be moved, that carry a boat, that carry tools, that carry whatever, parked on unauthorized surfaces. So, as I drive around, um, uh, these, these matters are becoming more and more prevalent in, in all parts of town, there isn't any area that's exempt from it, really. So, uh, I wanna share with you, though, some of the frustrations that we've had to get to the point where we've had fixed it. So, you know, having been here, you know, five years, or whatever it is now, uh, for me, you know, we had the intentions in the administration to start moving forward with this, trying to address this matter. But with the previous players, personnel that we had, run into problems. So, if it wasn't, uh, you know, didn't have a nuisance inspector that wanted to go out and do the, the heavy lifting, wanted to do just easy things, then we get somebody else, and then I got the law department, the law director at that time, who, every time we thought we were, we had it right, uh, we'd come back and he'd rewrite it again, and it, we never got to the point where we could launch a program. So, and, you know, we've, we've, we've replaced the, uh, with Safe Belt, we've replaced the law director, and, you know, we've replaced a lot of administrative personnel to get this thing to launch. So, we've been working on it internally. It started with, um, getting our code enforcement coordinator, the person who drives around every day, four hours a day, looking for things, turning those, uh, issues into me, I review them, review the pictures, and then we would send it over to enforcement, to something to be done about it. And then invariably, that would get kicked down to the police department to do something. Then the police department, you know, no one knew where anything was. So, we brought everybody together, law, uh, police, uh, administration, nuisance, and let's solve this problem. So we brought everybody together, law, police, administration, nuisance, and let's solve this problem. This is the result of that effort. So I want to hit a few of the points. One, the five-dollar parking ticket is not a deterrent for any type of activity. Okay, so I've got vehicles that are parked on Main Street for sale, parked in front yards. And they tell me, so what, give me a five-dollar ticket every day if you can come here thirty days. I'm just going to include it in the price to sell the vehicle. You know, so there's no means to deal with that. The same with utility trailers. Fine, I got a utility trailer parked in my yard. I got a boat parked in my yard. If you can come by, give me a five-dollar ticket. Well, you know, I'll pay it, kind of thing. So as you identified, though, there isn't an appeals mechanism. So we recognize that there wasn't one from before. We're incorporating that into it, fixing it. But we're recommending that the parking violation go from five to twenty-five. This hasn't been adjusted in fifty years. So now, will twenty-five deter somebody? Maybe. It's possible. I'm not going to hold my breath. But let me identify the process for you that we're going to go through on this. So let's just say we have an unauthorized vehicle parked, we have a vehicle parked in an unauthorized spot. Somebody turns it into us. Maybe it's a concerned citizen. Maybe it's our own code enforcement coordinator. Maybe it's me. Somehow we get wind of it, we go out, take a look, gets turned in. Week one, police officer will go out and get a ticket. And with that ticket, it's going to give an administrative warning letter that's going to spell out in detail what is going to happen over the next seven weeks if you fail to comply. We'll let you know what you're going to, it's not going to be a surprise to anybody. You'll be handed this warning letter by the police officer. Week one, you get the twenty-five-dollar ticket. Week two, they're going back out to see if you've made any effort to remediate this problem. If you don't, you're getting another ticket. Week three, they go out. If there is still no sign of remediation, they're getting a twenty-five-dollar ticket and then the police officer is notifying the zoning department that this issue, which is in violation of the zoning laws, requires them to remediate it. The building, the zoning department will issue a warning letter to the resident, to the owner of the property, that this situation needs to be resolved. You have thirty days to do it. That's, that letter is going out on the third visit from the police officer. Week four, another visit from the police officer. Week five, week six, week seven. At the end of that time, your thirty days on the zoning letter will have expired. If you have done nothing. Now it's a zoning violation. We're going to go to court. Zoning violation is a hundred and fifty dollars a day. Go to court, we'll seek relief to have your vehicle impounded if necessary. And then all the fees associated to this will likely end up on your tax duplicate that the city has expended. So we're taking it very seriously because it's rampant and people are complaining. They call us, they complain about it. They file for action to be done and that's under the present circumstances.
There's no teeth.
There's no teeth to it. Can't do, can't really do anything but nag them. And if they don't want to comply, they don't comply. So this will give us that means to, gives them a means to appeal. It also allows for us, once the zoning letter is issued, to enter into a corrective action plan where we, they can sit down with us and say, well, look, I see how serious you are about this, but I need a little bit of time. Can you work with me? By such and such date, I will do this. I'm going to get a storage unit and store this stuff in. Fine, we'll work with you. Show us a contract that you're going to get a storage unit. And then it's going to be available and you're going to take some time to move it all in. We'll work with you on that. So it's building in some flexibility, some compassion. But at the same time, we're also building this so that we have teeth in it and that we can move forward with enforcement of it.
So I'm a homeowner on Lindy Lane. All right, lived there for X amount of years. And I have a single car garage, like most homes down in that area. So we have two cars. Driveways are small. So I've talked to my neighbor next to me and I have this big RV I'm parking on the grass in between us, backed in. You see a lot of stuff like that. Now how would we?
That would be covered under what I just outlined for you.
Okay.
It means that that person with that RV has to go take that someplace else.
Right.
That's, you know, we can't have everybody's property subject to the rules that they want and only what they want.
But.
If you want that, go move to the township.
Yeah.
Because that's where you can get away with all that stuff.
Exactly. You know, that's why people live in townships because of no zone. I don't know how it will be accepted because they've done it for so long. There's a lot of people out there and they've done it for so long. A lot of the houses throughout North Canton were built in nineteen fifties and fifty threes. They got a small driveway, a one-car garage, you know. I just think it could be asking, you know. And we're sending out the police department seven times.
But haven't these been, this has been the ordinance for years, right?
Yeah. Just because they have been caught doesn't. But I would say, I hear that a lot and I would say, you know, well, you know, geez, I don't know why you're all of a sudden getting this. You know, I used to drive on Route Thirty, you know, at seventy-five miles an hour all the time. Nobody ever said anything. Well, I'm sorry, but the rules are that it's only sixty-five and now you're getting caught.
I understand. Trying to put my feet in their shoes sometimes. It's, you know, it's a two-way street. But I just see that, you know, there's a lot of it, a lot of it in the city and I've seen a lot of it, you know, and, all right.
Questioned, in our overnight parking rig, I have a new driveway installed, concrete, get it sealed, need to park on the street. I need a permit.
We have issues like that that pop up from time to time, holiday, special events coming on, people coming in, excess parking. And we have, you know, they've notified the police department that, hey, on Monday night, I'm going to have some people over from out of town that say, okay, if they park in the street in front of my house. And practice has been that, you know, one-off kind of thing or, you know, periodically one-off, not every night, all year long. We've allowed and shown, you know, compassion for people, flexibility for that. But not for parking in front of the house on the street, two A M. to six A M. every day, every week, every month. You know, that's not a temporary issue.
It's not something you want.
But I think, Daryl, where you're going to go, because that was my question as well. So it looks like for that exact scenario, that you're having your driveway redone, you have to park in the street for a week. It looks like there's a fifty-dollar permit fee for it now?
Seriously?
Is that, unless I'm reading this incorrectly, what is it, three fifty-one?
Three fifty-one fourteen.
Fourteen C. And then I guess the question, permits shall permit one vehicle. So if I've got a vehicle and my wife has a vehicle, is it now a hundred dollars to park in the street while our driveway is being?
Fourteen?
Yeah.
I believe that's for three months. That's temporary.
What number pad?
I'm sorry?
That's temporary parking for three months. Three months.
Okay, so what would it be for, like, hey, a week, my driveway is being poured tomorrow, I need to park in the street?
We would, you know, we.
Just the way it's been. It's been like, hey, what's your license plate number? You're good to go. Okay. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Can you speak to the removal of the misdemeanor clause? Is that so that this can move into the zoning side for punishment? And that's why it's been removed? Okay.
Well, it's also looking at other cities in Stark County reflecting, we're not going to throw you in jail for a parking ticket. So we took out all the misdemeanor violates because it's just going to be a parking ticket. We're not going to try and jail you or take you to Canton Unicor.
Good, okay. I think we're putting teeth in it on the other side. Makes sense. Just want to clarify.
Great question.
All right. I guess I'll make a motion, just move, we move to the council agenda after hearing Pat.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. John, you're up again.
All right, we have an ordinance establishing chapter thirteen thirteen of the classified ordinance of the city of North Canton, thereby creating regulations for establishment and maintenance of grading and drainage on lots in the city of North Canton. I think this is part of nine forty-eight, I believe. It's making sure that the water is running off properly, going, you know, the right places. We're just setting the requirements. We need to set the requirements, which are in the package, and they'll work. And the other is on nine forty-eight, it makes you to, you're paying attention to other things. You know, your neighbors and your words running off into the street and stuff of that nature. And this is just probably mostly for new building or new construction or if there is a case out on Main Street or whatever, businesses, because it's just residents on that.
To put a fine point on that, we think that, you know, for new construction, the subdivision regulations really dictate what's happening with grading and drainage. The intent of this, and I say this was on my bucket list as an administrator to get done, because what I have seen over the last few years are instances where on existing residential, people are wanting to bring in loads of dirt to regrade their property. And in that context of regrading, they're causing the water to drain onto an adjoining neighbor's property of an existing home there. And we had this, there's a number of examples of this, but we had this down on, with a former councilman's relative. Moved into the community, bought a home, loved the home, fixed up the home. Home was on one of those TV shows. And then the neighbor next door brought in a lot of dirt and regraded the land and sloped the water, the soil for the water to run to this person's house. Now this person's house has got water issues all the time. And we had no ordinance to really address that. So we've been working on this really since that time. And there have been other examples of other constituents throughout all four wards that have done similar things. So what we're saying is that we want to be able to require you to pull a permit so that our engineer can review your specs on how you're grading this land and where that water is going to drain to. And we just don't want it draining to a neighbor's home and then you put them.
Or business.
Or business, and you put them in the hot seat. So that's the intent. We discussed this as part of a lot of the things that we do in the building realm. We've gone to the B I A, talked with them, let them know, hey, this, most of your peoples are really involved in new construction on new grounds. There's not a lot of that in North Canton. This really doesn't address that. This is really for just people who are looking to relandscaped their property. So we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay. Any questions? Pat went over on that. So I'll make a motion that we move this to the next council meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. John, your last one.
Oh.
See.
The vacation rentals discussion. I wasn't able to, you have anything to add?
No, go ahead.
No, I didn't even know this was on there. So I guess this would be where the Airbnbs and that type of stuff, technically, they're illegal.
That is correct.
In our, in our laws, they're illegal. So we're probably finding out a lot of this on the rental registration.
Yes.
You know, so I would say, you know, let's talk about it, you know, because there's quite a few Airbnbs and B and Bs. Or what did you call them?
VRBO. VRBO.
So.
Well, I think, to your point, if I may, that through the rental registration program, which is going spectacularly well from our point of view, and we've come across, you know, some people who were proactive. We applaud these individuals.
Yeah.
That have reached out. I think some through you, John, this is kind of where it kind of started.
We want you to register. Even though it's illegal, we still need you to register.
We're concerned about, you know, life safety. You should be too. They are. They want that to be done. That, you know, brings into questions, you know, analysis from the finance department over this whole thing. We've kind of done some Googling or searching on our own and you'd be surprised how many pop up in the city limits. So it's out there. I know other communities have struggled with this as well, trying to figure out what to do. But it does bring into question, and maybe, I don't know yet if it's here, and we're bringing this out for discussion. But, you know, we've all been to other communities. I've been to Columbus, done the vacation rental. And, you know, concern is that you're getting loud parties, disturbing the neighborhood, kind of thing. And so there's efforts to kind of try to regulate it. I'm not sure I, you know, we're not bringing forth a proposal at this time. But we would like to get a flavor from city council and, you know, if a direction that we might go or just things for us to consider as we kind of noodle this. It is not something that I believe will be slated to be resolved this year. But as you've heard with these other things that we do, you know, it takes us about a year to completely vet it all out between all the various different places. Legal, building, police, fire, blah, you know, the whole list. But we thought it's appropriate because it's on our radar now.
How are we handling when they go to apply for a rental registration? What are we telling them?
Ben, what do we tell them?
At the moment, we're asking them to comply.
So is it legal?
Technically, no.
Are we telling them that if they ask?
That's part of the reason we're here tonight is to ask.
Wait, 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 one other question.
Part of the reason we're here tonight is to ask, you know, the people that are coming forward, their properties are immaculate.
Right.
They pass first time, three-year license, no issues.
Right. So now we have.
But there could be a bad actor. So I know from my time at Walsh that there are wealthier students who will rent an Airbnb on a weekend because they couldn't party at Walsh to party at the Airbnb. I believe the ones I'm aware of are all in plain township.
That's why you live in the township.
But so I, part of the reason we're here tonight, do you want, does council want us to crack down on these people or let them?
Go ahead, Daryl.
Keep going.
From my perspective, I think the second option to legalize and regulate is the best approach. And the administration should pursue that. Clearly, we will want to make sure that, like all of our other rental properties, that they meet a minimum safety requirement. CO detector, smoke detectors, et cetera. I think that just is common sense. It is a rental property. It is a business. So let's. It is a rental property, it is a business, so let's, let's address the safety issue.
Have they, okay, go ahead.
Quick, I'm gonna lose it if I, if it lingers here, given my age.
I'll be catching up.
I think the other thing is this, is that if, I think it's best to have a policy written that if we have repeated violations of, I don't know, looking for the right word here, but we have disturbing the peace, there we are. There are repeated violations where the peace is disturbed. I think the neighbors deserve, the property owners who surround these sites, would look to us for a solution. And I think the solution should, best should be at the end, at the front end, rather than the back end. What that solution looks like, I don't know, you terminate the permit if you've got one event a year, two events a year, that get out of hand, I don't know. Were there, at Walsh, were there some frequent flyer sites that people liked to go to?
What I was gonna ask.
You seem to be...
I was an RA, so I did not get invited to the parties. I caught people coming back onto campus intoxicated.
Did you attend the event?
There's the caveat there.
But I think, I think it would be just a good idea. And again, it's like everything else, I think a forearmed is the best way to be. And again, to the theme that we've mentioned tonight, I don't think we need to be oppressive. We know that we're dealing, by and large, with people who are approaching us, are good, responsible folks. But should we be prepared to address a bad apple? I think the answer is yes. Because really, what you need is to stick to that property and say, hey, listen, you know, we can't have this again. And if you do, here's the consequence.
Yep.
We have it in the rental registration. So if we make it legal, we have the rules already set, and it can go from a three-year, you know, registration to, I think it's down to one year, and six months. So we have all of that already set up into place, it's just making it legal and they're rental registrations. I think it'd be that simple to add those on.
I'd like to add into that, I think if you look at Verbo, I've used Airbnb, we've got one coming up, they're surviving on the reviews. They wanna have those positive reviews. On the reviews, they wanna have those positive reviews, because they're renting for a shorter period of time. So they're gonna wanna have that. Coming to this community, I don't know if they'd be coming to this community for necessarily for a party, maybe for a reunion. My son came back from Colorado with granddaughters, and it was much easier for them to rent an Airbnb than to try and stay in a hotel. They've got all the kitchen facilities, they can do bedtime routines, it makes for a nice event. And those that have them are gonna have to price them so that they're not losing money. On the side for problems and issues, maybe we can go down the permit side of, as an Airbnb, the number of tenants are quite large, you have an annual inspection. If you have a disturbance call, you have an inspection after that. Because there could have been such damage caused, that there would be safety issues after that.
Yeah.
So at that point, the person that has the Airbnb or the Verbo knows that that going into the problem, and maybe their deposit isn't returned if there's a disturbance call.
Yeah, you know, the biggest rental comes through Hall of Fame week.
Right.
And I think the people I've talked to that have them, they have pretty strict rules for them to follow. And they have a nice down payment and stuff of that nature.
What I was gonna ask is, and I, and it could be incorrect, but back when these Airbnbs and Verbos started, it seemed like a lot of it was, hey, I'm gonna be out of town for a week, I'll rent out my place, or I'm gonna winter down in Florida, I'll rent my house out for a couple of months. And I think it's transferred more to people buy these properties and operate them three hundred and sixty-five days a year as rental properties. And I guess, so my question is, is absolutely, if it's being operated three hundred and sixty-five days a year as a VRBO or as a Airbnb, absolutely, we should rent them, or, excuse me, put them through the rental registration. Like Darryl said, I think they should be regulated. But do you still regulate, or how does it, and I guess this is maybe more of a question, how do you face those people that say, you know what, I'm going out of town for two weeks during the Hall of Fame stuff, I don't wanna deal with that nonsense, I'm gonna throw this up and make a few bucks while I'm out of town? How do you treat those people that only do it maybe once or twice a year? I don't know. Or do you treat them any differently? Do they still have to get the same yearly permit, even though it might be like a whim, hey, let's throw this up on Airbnb for a week?
Well, let's be honest and say that in that particular instance, we would have to find out about it first. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of people that do this without us knowing.
Yep.
And we won't know until they're caught, until somebody registers a complaint, because that two-week period they were gone, the place was kinda crazy, what was going on there. And in that instance, then we, you know, then they get, become subject to, you know, all the terms and conditions and penalties that apply for failing to register.
Mm-hmm.
I think the administration's asking us a question tonight, without getting too far in the weeds, is, do we wanna pursue regulation? That's A. You could call for a vote. And then B is, let's let, sort this out a little bit, sift through it, they've gotten a fair number of comments, and bring something back and say, hey, listen, we've talked to other communities, this is what it looks like, this is what we wanna go with, are you on board? But I think what they're looking for tonight's a red, yellow, or green light.
I personally, I'd rather see some sort of specific examples, like, I, it's hard for me to, you know, I use Airbnb and Verbo to go on vacations, so, to leave here, not to come here. So I'm trying to put myself in the mind of people coming over here. I mean, are they going to be destructive, are they not going to be? I don't know. I mean, I'd like to see some information on what types of place, places around here are getting rental, rented, when. I don't, it's really difficult, because I really don't think an Airbnb is anywhere in the same realm as a rental, especially depending on the frequency. So, you know, in your example, if you're just running it through Hall of Fame weekend, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's the same as running it for three or four months during the summer.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
I mean, a charter, what is it, a hundred bucks for the rental registration?
Single-family home is one fifty, is that correct, Ben?
Single-family home would be a hundred?
A hundred bucks.
That's the, the most expensive is a hundred even.
Hundred even is the most expensive. Like the one lady, she's off of Everhard, I don't know, Sawway, one of those streets. She told me upfront, well, I let a guy stay here, and he barters his workmanship on the property. I said, well, that's a rental registration, you're gonna have to, and she signed up and everything. I don't think they're gonna, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal. Because for a hundred bucks, I don't care if it's two weeks, or what, they're gonna be making their money. And I really think we're getting more of a family type of, not to say families can't have blowout parties. You know what I mean, I don't think we're getting the Walsh College kids to do this.
I think, getting back to what Darryl said, green light, right? And I don't think that administration's saying that the Airbnbs and Verbos are going to be using the exact same rental registration requirements, I mean, maybe you are, but I think we're just saying, research it, figure it out.
Come back.
But, yeah, let's give these people who are visiting our community somewhere to stay besides the M-Star. I mean, let's, I mean, we can agree to that, right?
Currently, we have to make it either, is it gonna be legal or not legal? Because we are sort of bending the rules right now. I have an Airbnb, I know it's not legal, but I'm running it and registering it to be a rental. Is that how we're, I mean...
But it is, is it in that same category? That's the question.
Yeah.
I don't know. And for administration, how would you prefer to look at it? Would you prefer to look at, is it a rental-type angle, or something different?
Well, I think, I think, thank you for asking. I think where I'm, we are at with it is, you know, it isn't so much the concern with the one-off, two-week rental at the Hall of Fame, but to the extent, what is being rented? All right, so, and how are people being accommodated? So for instance, the example that I shared with you when I was in Columbus, there was, you know, the house sleeps fourteen, had the whole house, and there was fourteen of us there. But seven people were sleeping in the basement.
Hmm.
All right, so there's no, there was no, you know, there's code, fire code on that, that there has to be an escape route, other than just the steps that you went down. You know, glass block windows, you know, that, those are the things that were more, you know, concerned about. You wanna do it, and you're like, well, you know, I finished the basement last year, and, man, I could, I could, somebody could sleep down there for a couple nights, or a week, or whatever, and, you know, and then something happens. So that's what I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, I don't think that there's a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of money to be made in this community with this business model. Because as you said, a lot of people are not looking to come here, they're looking to leave here.
Good point.
So we'll take, we'll run and play with it for a while, talk with the other communities, and we'll, you know, fashion something and be back at some point.
How many have registered that are Airbnbs or rent break lists?
Ben, are you able to break that out, or you don't really know?
I am aware of four.
Four?
But we don't, we don't ask that question specifically.
Six months, haven't you?
Yeah.
There'll be a lot more of those that we're unaware of. There's no need for a motion or anything, so...
No motion pursued?
No, I don't think so. I think I have a sense of the council, we bring something back, and I don't have a sense of the council, then it just won't get passed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Street and Alley, this is me. Okay, so this is replacing and repealing and replacing the subdivision regulations. I read through this, this is a huge lift. I know you guys have been working on this for quite some time, Ben, did you say over a year?
Year and a half.
Year and a half. I'll let you guys kick it off, Patrick, Ben.
I'll let Ben take lead.
So this is our subdivision regulation, so this would be if someone was plating a new neighborhood, or strip mall, or something to that effect. As President Schreier said, we have been working on this for nearly a year and a half, and we, when we started this, we were sort of trying to time when it comes to you to be in between developments. So Monticello phase, all the phases are pretty much set, they've already got their plaits approved. Sanctuary, all their phases have got their plaits approved. So now is sort of the time, while nobody's in the process, to take a look at the process. Just generally, the rewrites clarify and simplify the process that they're going through. Particularly things like paying their bonds, which was not actually written out in the ordinance previously, it was just a administrative policy we made them follow. We clarified what a preliminary versus a final plot is, and that the previous, or the current regulations, everything for a final plot, you have to have for the preliminary. So we simplified it, that your preliminary plot, you don't have to have figured out exactly where every single water line's gonna go. Just tell us where the streets will be, where all the lot lines will be, things like that. The second important point is we, the current regulations make a city block structure illegal. So if I was gonna draw a new subdivision, I couldn't do a city block structure. It would have to be non-through streets, think of the sanctuary or Monticello. That makes N feel really difficult, because most of old North Canton is a city block structure. So if you had two or three blocks to redevelop, you couldn't, under the current rules, you wouldn't technically be allowed to connect the streets there. So this doesn't mandate a city block structure, but it opens that possibility up again. Three, it prohibits the construction of new private streets. Periodically, the private streets, we do have, whoever's in charge of the homeowner's association rotates, and then we get a call asking why we didn't plant a street. So we're just gonna try and nip that in the bud right off the bat, by preventing any new private streets from occurring. We simplified the open space requirements, so that the open space no longer has to become city property. So currently, the open space must become city property, which means the taxpayer has to maintain it. This eliminates that requirement. Four, four is the codification of the bonding process that you guys have all been part of, approving bonds and releasing bonds. And then five and six are the new regulations that have been added. So the first one was added at the request of the administration. So when developers are building streets, and sewers, and storm sewers, and water lines, there are an awful lot of inspections that go along with that. Right now, the taxpayer is subsidizing all of them. So the engineering department asked that we add a requirement that the developer reimburse the engineering department for all of those inspector hours. And then six is a requirement, this goes hand in hand with the grading ordinance that you talked about earlier. We are asking developers to submit when they're done an as-built grading plan. And that will enable us to enforce that grading ordinance, because now we know what the grade was at the time it was finished. So we'll know if you modified the grade of your property, because we actually know what the grade was. As opposed to now, you know, we really have no idea what the starting grade was for most of the properties that is it. Those are the big highlights.
I do have one question on the open space. So if the city doesn't maintain it, who would maintain it? It would be the homeowners' association, if they had a homeowners' association. But if they didn't have a homeowners' association, who would it default to at that point?
Developer.
Developer, okay.
They'd still own it.
Okay.
Whoever's title to the property, that piece of property.
Okay, makes sense. Questions, comments? Do you want to add anything, Patrick?
No, I think Ben covered it well.
David?
Good.
I like it even. Jane?
I'm good, too.
John?
Good.
Darryl?
Yeah, I'm good.
I will make a motion that we send this to the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And motion and a second, I'll make a motion to postpone further consideration until the codified order, the conditions are met.
Set motion?
Yes.
For vocal second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So... Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?